Members of the public have been given the opportunity to submit questions by email. Those have all been collected and consolidated as best we could. We'll follow a similar format to what you just saw in the earlier session to mix it up a little bit and ask as many questions as we can. Candidates will give opening remarks in the order in which they're listed on the ballot, closing remarks in the reverse order, and then they've been provided random speaking order throughout to kind of keep it interesting. Sandy again is our timekeeper. She's got signs at the 1 minute, 30 second, and the zero mark. We don't have a 15 second, but she's been flashed in the 1 minute when we're doing the short ones. And so if you'll just remember.
That's 15 seconds?
That's 15 seconds. So start to wind it up and at that point. So the candidates in ballot order, first for candidates for place two are Chris Schulmeister and Nathan Polsky.
Four.
What did I say?
Place two.
Oh, place four. Thank you. And candidates for place six are Srini Raghavan and Ben Trahan. So thank you all for being here. Each of you has two minutes for an opening statement. And Chris, we're going to start with you and go down the table.
Okay. Am I on here? My name is Chris Schulmeister. I am.
No, you're not on.
I am not on.
Oh, got it. Now I'm good. My name is Chris Schulmeister. Glad to be here. I am running for seeking reelection to Allen City Council, place four. My wife Jeannie and I have called Allen home for over 35 years. We raised our son John here, who's a 2008 Allen High School graduate. And today, he's an attorney here in the city of Allen, working for the firm North Cut and Dean. He is married to his wife Brooke, who's a registered nurse at Baylor Scott &amp; White. And the two of them together managed to give Jeannie and I our greatest blessing in life, and that's our two-year-old grandson Jack. He's a handful. My professional career spans over 37 years. I've worked 17 years in corporate finance for the J.C. Penney Company and the Beal Corporation. I've held leadership roles there in strategic and financial planning. In 2002, I broke off with two guys I went to grad school with, and I formed a private equity firm, a firm that I retired from last year. I have a bachelor's degree in finance and an MBA from Southern Methodist University. Prior to being elected to council in 2019, I served on the Allen Economic Development Board for three years, and I also served on the Community Development Corporation Board for five, and also was on the 2016 GeoBond or Capital Improvement Bond Program. I was the chair of their Finance Subcommittee. Outside of city government, I was on the Allen or All Community Outreach Board for six years. I was two years there as president. I'm a proud member of the Allen Sunrise Rotary Club, as well as the First United Methodist Church of Allen. My roots here run really, really deep. I want to thank the Friends of the Allen Public Library, the Rotary Club of Allen, and the Sunrise Rotary Club for hosting and sponsoring this event tonight, and I look forward to fielding your questions.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Polsky. I'm running for city council, place number four. First, I want to say thank you to everyone that was able to come out tonight, and for those that are watching online, YouTube, and on Facebook. I've been a resident of Collin County for over 30 years. I've had the opportunity to see how much it's grown, especially Allen. What prompted my wife and I to move to Allen was its central location, its personality, and at the time, its affordability. If I was looking to move to Allen today, I wouldn't. Not because I wouldn't want to, but because I couldn't afford to. Many young families are unable to afford homes with the surging home appraisals. Apartments, they're more expensive than a new mortgage. Longtime residents and residents on fixed incomes are seeing their taxes go up, which has them looking to move further away from their loved ones and the places that they've been for 10, 20, or 30 years. While I can't bring those home prices down, or lower the cost of groceries, or the cost of gas, what we can do is keep more money in everyone's pocket, lower the burden on our residents, and that is why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Srini Raghavan. I'm running for Allen City Council, place number six. I'd like to thank the Rotary, the Rotary Sunrise, the Friends of the Allen Public Library, and the moderator for putting this forum together. And thank you to the audience for being here and watching this online. I legally immigrated from India 23 years ago to the United States. Emphasis is legally. My wife Lakshmi, my daughter Mira, and I have lived in Allen for the last 14 years. And we love the family-first emphasis, the diversity of cultures, the exceptional school system, the great parks, and the public safety that the city of Allen has to offer. From my humble beginnings in India to my great professional success here in the United States, I can affirm to you today that the American dream is alive and well right here in Allen, Texas. I've spent the last 20 years leading global purchasing teams managing spends of over $1.5 billion without compromising quality and without compromising service. And unlike some on this stage, I am a numbers guy, and I absolutely believe that that experience matters. The following are my top three priorities for the city of Allen to keep it best-in-class. Lower the tax property tax rate without compromising quality or service. I will be an advocate for our first responders, making sure that they have access to the best technology, training, and hiring available. I'll support the expansion of parks and trails and investments in aging infrastructure. And being a 20-year procurement guy, I can absolutely assure you that we will do this. I will accomplish this in the most cost-effective and in the most transparent manner. Once again, I'm Srini Raghavan. I'm running for Allen City Council, place number six, and I'm asking for your vote on May 7th. Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Ben Trahan, proud candidate for Allen City Council, place six. I'd like to take my two minutes, not by telling you all of my experience, but adding as a value to the citizens to use that experience. From three degrees and one graduate banking degree earned all at night over my 24-year career as a banker, I lend money to companies to produce their widgets that roll off of production lines, majority. And one thing I like about Allen is it is an at-large city council. You don't get into a line, and you don't choose to vote Democrat or Republican. It's nonpartisan. That's what I enjoy most about it. My family's lived here since 2006. I can go over my 12 years of volunteering for multiple service-level organizations, raising money for public safety first responders to supplement disability income while they're on disability. Can go over the vast network I've had, I've gained since I've lived in Allen. Each one of those has joined or gained from service organizations. And so every person I've met in the city has started with a service organization, a volunteer service organization, which I enjoy. Again, it's nonpartisan. My voting record, I've voted in every single election you can vote in since 2012. I think it's very important, and also volunteering is very important. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. So similar to the format that we just witnessed with the school board trustees, we have six questions. Two of those will be for all candidates to respond to. The other four are mixed among the two different places. So I'm going to start the first question for the candidates in place six. Ben, you'll go first, and then Srini will follow. In your view, what are the most significant transportation challenges facing the city, including those without a car? And how would you propose addressing them?
Sure. In listening to the concerns of regional transit authorities and council or government, council of governors, a lot of people think the question is how to move people from north to south and south to north. Actually, it's becoming more and more west to east and east to west. Those with limited means that can have rideshare and mobility options, that's the biggest question that they have going forward. The biggest impediment to that is how do you do it effectively, efficiently, and with the most reach and portability to where everybody can take advantage of it? You know, we're equidistant between DFW and Love Field. That's extremely important as a transit hub. So the east and west and west to east mobility is the biggest question, you know, coming up in decades.
Okay. Srini.
Yeah, great question. So let me split that question and the answer into two parts. The first one is the city traffic is growing because of businesses coming in and the population growing. So I'm in support of using technology to decongest, you know, we could put them on the signals, we could have a central control room and diffuse the traffic. So I'm all for getting more technology in place. Secondly, our city council and the city staff participates in regional planning, whether it's 75, you know, studying the traffic patterns and all those kind of things. I think that's another great step. Now here's, to answer the question on the second part, the service for, you know, the folks over 65 or, you know, who are physically challenged, we do have a dark service that the city pays for. It's about $200,000 a year. I'm 100% in favor of renewing that service and making it great, accessible to everybody. But here's one thing that I want to absolutely state my position. I am a solid no on dark rail. That's my answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Candidates in place four, your question, Nathan, I'm going to start with you, and then Chris. We have numerous neighborhoods in the city that were developed more than 20 years ago, and some are aging better than others. What steps do you believe the city should take to ensure our residential properties remain attractive and desirable for new residents to the community? What do you think is the city's role in that?
The city's role is to make sure that the streets and the sidewalks are well-maintained. As far as the individual homes and properties, that should be left up to the residents themselves. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, well, the aging infrastructure in our city is indeed, I think, the elephant in the room. I've talked about this a lot. You know, as you age, things start breaking down, and it's up to us as a city council to make sure that we are fiduciary responsibilities and we allocate reserves and plan for 10 years and 15 years down the road. I think if you're, if we continue to seek short-term accolades in our budgeting process and compromise the future of our city, it's going to be hard to keep up with some of the things we're doing. Fortunately, our strategic plan that we just passed council together is we did a comprehensive street assessment program, and it's part of our, again, our strategic plan, and also we're identifying the necessary upgrades. Again, we have to reserve capital to fund it, and it's a critical part of our job as a city council, and I'm confident we'll get it done.
Okay. Thank you. Second question starts in place six. Srini, you go first this time, and then Ben. The city is in the process of creating a plan for the redevelopment of the downtown business district. Would you support multifamily housing as a component of downtown if it's required to support the overall business plan?
So let me answer this question this way. The downtown that I envision and what the voters want or the citizens want is something that is uniquely Allen. It's got to have a character for itself, and what, and there are a couple of proposals in the works on that, right? So if there are apartment complexes that can be built by right, then obviously that would never come to council, and then that can go ahead. But if there are variances to the Allen zoning ordinance that are sought to build apartments over there, then I would be a solid no on that. What it really needs to, what really needs to happen is, you know, based on the community inputs, they really need to come up with a plan that is creative and makes it walkable and, you know, a wholesome entertainment for everybody, not only for in Allen, but also draw more public. But I think I answered your question. If apartments are built by right, okay, but if they come to council seeking zoning changes, zoning variances, I would not be in support of that.
Thank you. Question one more time, please? The city is in the process of creating a plan for the redevelopment of the downtown business district. Would you support multifamily housing as a component of downtown if it's required to support the overall business plan?
Yes, sir. So I have voted to allow the development of a multifamily property publicly. I raised my hand twice on it. My thinking at the time is that the property that was proposed was a better alternative to what can be built by right, you know, if the developer wanted to start tomorrow, which is office, office space, office building. So as it was presented by city staff and the workshops I attended numerous times, the occupancy of a 24-hour renter opposed to a multifamily, excuse me, office tower that has occupants from Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, was better for downtown revitalization for a 24-hour occupant. So that's my thinking on the downtown multifamily. I think it's still needed for people to live downtown, to actually spend their money, nights, weekends, festivals. I mean, it's, it's what's going to need to happen in order to make downtown more viable. Stantec, the third-party property, excuse me, the third-party workshop facilitator also agrees that rental properties are going to need to go up there. So there you go.
Okay. Next question, candidates in place four. Chris, you'll start, and then Nathan. This is a little convoluted, so stay with me. Allen voters approved an unusually restrictive term limits amendment to the city's charter in 2019. Mayor and council members can serve up to two, three-year consecutive terms consecutively for a total of 12 years if they skip time in between. The question is this, is term limits a settled issue for you? Now that we're seeing how it works in practice, is there anything you think we should consider changing?
Well, I, I'm not so sure that the term limits as they're, as they're set today are in the best interest of our city. But having said that, the voters voted. That's what they wanted, and I am the type, the person that says if that's what the voters in our city prefer, you know, that's why we're a democracy. People vote, and they made the decision, and we'll move on. It's up to somebody else if they want to come back and revisit this. But, but the voters voted, and I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Nathan?
Saying this is a convoluted question is spot-on. I stood out, actually, outside the polls dirt when this was on the ballot, and the number of people that, at the time, didn't know what the, what the item was about and what it actually meant was kind of scary. That being said, county, city council, elected positions, those should not be career jobs. These are volunteer positions. People should, you know, get in, make the necessary changes, you know, improve the city, improve wherever they're running for, to the best of their capabilities, and then step aside and let somebody else come in and see if they can make a change, continue it, or try something completely different.
Okay. Thank you. The third question is for all the candidates, and Ben, I'm going to start with you and just come down the table. Allen, like neighboring communities, has used economic incentives to attract businesses to Allen, which helps build the commercial tax base. Do you consider this a good practice, and would you support continuing to use incentives to attract business?
Absolutely. Allen Economic Development Corporation was a foresight of the people who established Allen back in the early 90s. They had the foresight to say, we want to utilize our sales tax revenue, you know, half sent for Allen Economic Development, half sent for Community Development Corporation. We want to grow our city. So yes, absolutely, you need tax incentives to bring in corporations, to bring in people that want to live here, that want to work here, that add to the workforce, that add to the, the culture of Allen. There's also, there's IQ, EQ, and now we need to learn about cultural intelligence, CQ. So having a diverse background in economic development needs to bring in people and companies that can build out our 121 corridor for the future, propel Allen for the next two or three decades. So yes, absolutely.
Srini.
All right. So I'll answer the question in two parts. So part A is Allen EDC is doing a great job, right? I mean, you look at 121 and all the developments coming there, plus even the ones previous to that. They've done a great job. Kudos to them. What I would say is, let's go a little bit, you know, let's get a little bit more aggressive, you know, and let's invite, you know, the Microsofts of the world and the Googles of the world. I mean, we have some really great complexes coming up on 121. So let's go get some of those companies, not saying that we should not try for the others, but let's go for the best. That's always my drive. I think that's what we should do. Now, part two is, we are at an inflection point. So we are going from all this greenfield development, and that's going to start slowing down. So the question is, how is the Allen Economic Development Council charter and how is their mission going to maybe change or morph a little bit in terms of how are they going to support our, you know, the strip malls which are empty, right? What kind of ideas do we have, or what kind of initiatives they can do to fill up those strip malls? Because we know that when some of those strip malls go, go down and start going down and down, then it becomes more difficult to resuscitate that neighborhood. So little change of focus, maybe five years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So one of my goals is to lower property taxes. In order to do that, we have to have some other sort of revenue, and the best revenue that I can see there is additional sales taxes. And to generate that, we need more sales. Encouraging small businesses, new businesses to come in. The 121 corridor is a great opportunity, as well as all the strip malls on the east side. There's a lot of vacancies right now. If we can encourage and incentivize new businesses to start there, I know it's really expensive to get a new business started, and so any help we can provide them would just bring more revenue into the city.
Chris?
Yeah, well, incentives that the CDC and EDC make are investments, I believe, in the city. We have 900 acres out there on the 121 corridor of 135 we just broke ground, or it's on its way with the farm. I always say that this is really the last frontier of the city of Allen as far as buildup. And if we, and this is our opportunity to really build our commercial tax base. And if you look at some of our neighboring cities, they have a larger commercial tax base, which allows them to provide more relief to the homeowners' tax bill. And if we don't do 121 corridor like we should, we're doing injustice to the residents of Allen. And it's, as Srini and Nathan pointed out, it's going to drive sales tax revenue growth, and it's going to drive commercial tax revenue growth. And, and it's a good investment. It's going to return just multiple millions of dollars, I think, and it's going to be great for our city. This is our last opportunity, and we need to take advantage of it.
Okay. Thank you all. Question four is for the candidates in place four. First, Nathan, you'll go, and then Chris. When making difficult decisions, it's quite likely there'll be disagreement among the council. How do you handle conflict under these circumstances when there are opposing views?
So handling conflict, I mean, not everybody's going to agree on everything 100% of the time. So I believe everybody is, has the right to their own opinions, to their own views. And at the end of the day, on the council, it's going to come down to a vote. So at that opportunity or at that point, it's going to be majority.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, well, you've been around as long as I have, and you see a lot of conflict in business and government, whatever. You know, I think it's, again, it's about being respectful. I really believe that our council today works really well together. I mean, we're respectful of each other. We learn from each other, I think. We don't agree on, on everything, and that's understandable. Heck, I don't even agree with my wife on, on a lot of things, so, and she still lives with me. But I, I do think that we have a, we have a great deal of mutual respect for each other on the council, and again, we air our differences, and, and we vote, and we don't hold any grudges afterwards. At least, I haven't experienced them, so I think we're in a good place.
Okay. Thank you. This question is for the candidates in place six. Ben, you'll go, and then Srini. As Allen increasingly diversifies, how would you ensure that diverse populations feel welcome and safe in the city and have a voice in local government? What else would you recommend that we do that we're not currently doing?
So for my campaign effort, I have recruited several members of the Allen City Council Advisory Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I like to build a big tent, as it's been said, for campaign efforts. That gives you a diverse background, diverse perspective. I ask people their opinions outright and say, how do you feel about that? How does that sound when it hits your ears and what I'm saying? So a lot of my, a majority of my campaign and my effort that I'm proud to have is, comes from a diverse background. The city has taken the extra steps of having an advisory committee that has given kind of a roadmap to more diversity within the city. It's important because everybody, like Councilmember Schulmeister said, not everybody's going to agree, but it's important to hear everybody to understand. And that's what the city needs to do, is just have more diversity, more advisory committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So it's a big step.
Thank you. Yes.
All right. Here's my answer. So the Allen, there was a DEI ad hoc committee that was set up. Thanks to Mayor Falk and rest of the council members for setting that up. They gave their recommendations a couple months ago. So essentially, the crux, and these recommendations basically put forth a model in terms of how we communicate, how we engage, and how we, you know, celebrate every culture that kind of weaves through the fabric of what we call Allen today. So the key crux of that was the establishment of a community engagement board. And that board is in charge of, you know, or promotes this engagement, the communication through events, right? We could have activities, events, something like a World Food Festival within Allen. That would be a great idea to do, right? You could have cultures, you could have all the cultures represented, all the foods, all the cuisines. That would be an amazing learning experience for all of us, right? So I think something like that would be, would be right there, you know, to go and celebrate. But the point is, we have a roadmap. We have a community engagement board that is being set up, and as part of the roadmap, it's about engagement, it's about celebration of those cultures, and activities that go in support of that. So communication and engagement, that's the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, I will start with place four, Chris, and then Nathan. The city is going to be crafting its legislative agenda later this year for the coming Texas Legislative Session. What items would you like to see included? And is there one thing in particular you'd like to see the legislature do for cities?
Yeah, I'd like to see more legislators, legislators actually who've served in a city council. It might be good for all of us. I think the thing that comes to my mind first is HB 2439, which is the building materials aspect and where the city cannot control the type of materials our developers, developers are using along history, and there's two women back there can attest to this. We've, we've had some pretty high standards on what are the faces and how the building should look, and we're unable to do that. The hard part is going to be repealing that because I think, I'm, I'm not sure, we talked about this at the council meeting, that the speaker may be the guy that drafted that legislation, so he may not be too willing to repeal it. But I hope, I'm hopeful that we can repeal HB 2439 and, and get it back to where we can control the, the building materials that are being used on, on our buildings and our developments.
I think repealing the bill is, it's a good start. One thing I can say for sure is that the people that live down in Austin, well, that's Austin. This is Allen. So any of the bills, any of the laws currently with the legislature that prevent the city from running and making the decisions on their own need to be rolled back and give more freedoms to the cities to choose how they want to run their own communities.
Thank you. This next question, place six. Srini, we'll go with you first, and then Ben. What infrastructure and city services need attention, and what should the city council do to address them?
I'll go first.
Yes, sir.
So in terms of the city infrastructure, I think the planning, zoning, and the staff has done a great job in terms of having that infrastructure in place. And if you define infrastructure as roads, bridges, and all that, I think we have done a fair job. Now here's where attention needs to be paid. As the city expands, as economic activity expands, as population expands, how do we make sure that we keep pace with that, right? So in terms of whether it's technology on signals or whatever that method might be, I'm all in support of that. So that's point, that's point number one. Now, in terms of, in terms of getting the Highway 75, for example, right, the congestion on that, I think we need more participation, get lessons learned in terms of how we can plan for that better. Also, as more businesses come in, here's, here's where I think we need to improve or maybe bolster our city department where we say, okay, new businesses are coming in. Is the city staffed enough so that they can do the inspections, they can do the planning, they can do the development and all that? So that's where I would focus on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I answer the question. So one more time, please?
One more time. What infrastructure and city services need attention, and what should the city council do to address them?
Thank you for the question. So you actually asked a question previously of neighborhoods that are falling into disrepair for infrastructure. There's a recent article online that showed the technology being used already as a kind of a Google Maps car that measures the streets and roadways and right-of-ways for potential items that can be improved and, and brought up to date. So technology is already being used. City staff, if you've ever attended a workshop more than once, if you've ever attended more city meetings during, outside of the political election season, then city staff is exceptional, credential professionals that put in more than 40 hours. They, they honor the system by actually volunteering for advisory boards, advisory committees. Retention of city staff is one of my main priorities. If you have ever opened a business, if you've ever paid impact fees, if you've ever ventured to seek out what your taxes do by taking leadership Allen, you can see that city staff is in fact exceptional, more than capable, and that's exactly what they're trained to do. And they do a very good job.
Okay. The sixth question is for all the candidates to answer. Chris, I'm going to start with you and just go down the table. What do you believe should be the top three goals or priorities for the city over the next five years?
Yeah, well, I think what starts, we need to maintain our strong public safety. That's critical, and we need to continue to invest in our, in our city, our parks, in our rec center. And more importantly, we keep coming back to this question, but the aging infrastructure, the streets, the roads, the sewer, the water lines. I know I'm being redundant, but this is a real critical issue, folks, and if we don't get our hands around it and really focus on it, it's going to come back in five, 10 years, and I'm not going to be here. But again, it's not my responsibility. As a council member, it's my responsibility to look in the best interest of the city 10 years from now and 15 years now from now, not just while I'm serving. And, and I'm going to continue to do that. Is that 15 seconds? Okay, so, so, yeah, so that and just our development of our 121 corridor, it has to continue to be a priority so we can build that commercial tax base.
Nathan?
Primarily, the critical infrastructure, your police, fire, roads, sidewalks, water. The next two items, taxes and the budget. I want my children to grow up in Allen. I want them to move into a house in Allen. They're not doing that with the job that they're getting right out of high school or right out of college. So, I want to make, and make Allen affordable for everybody by not pricing everybody out of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, here would be my top three priorities that I would say. First is, in terms of safety and security, that's paramount. So, to be on top of, best in class for that, I would say we got to complete station number six, get that staffed. I know, you know, the chief is already hiring staff for that. We have outgrown our police headquarters, or we'll soon do that with the increasing population, so I think we need a new police headquarters. So, that would be all bucketed as number one. The parks and rec is that, that's vital, because that's where, that's always ranks number one in every survey in the city. So, how do we expand that? How do we get shade structures and make improvements and all that? How do we make some of our parks ADA-compatible? All that stuff, that would be bucket number two that I would focus. And then, how do, how do we keep the tax base vibrant and growing, right? So, how do we get businesses? How do we get that 121 corridor all built up? And then, not only just that, but then after that, how do we keep the city vibrant in terms of getting new businesses to come into all the empty strip malls and wherever it is, right? That ongoing maintenance that I call it, right? That needs special focus. So, that, those would be my top three priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the top three priorities I have come up with are not my priorities, but the actual city managers that actually manage the city, the fire chief, police chief, the parks and recreation managers, the assistant managers. It'd be similar to me going to any one of your jobs and telling you, this is the priority. This is me coming in new, this is your priority. It's not like that for me. My top three are funding, fully funding public safety, fully funding parks and recreation, and fully funding infrastructure at the lowest tax rate possible. So, with years of speaking with city managers, assistant city managers, everybody that runs the city, previous, you know, their predecessors, that is their, those are their priorities. So, coming into this position, listening to the people that actually do the job every day, that is a priority. Coming in and just saying, this is what I plan to do without having actually done the job, that is not what's going to happen. So, listening to people that actually do the job every day that are paid to do the job, that's my priority as well.
Okay, it's time for closing remarks. Just to remind you, you have one minute, and Ben, we're starting with you, going in reverse valid order and coming back up to Chris, so, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you. I enjoy that we are actually in the Allen City Library. That recently, we voted to help with a bond issue, and I just want to reiterate that the Allen City Council is at-large, nonpartisan. I'd like to represent the 26.49 square miles of Allen, that's all of Allen, whether you live east of Allen, east of 75 or west of 75, if you live along the 121 corridor or in Waters Creek. If you're a citizen, you have a voice. I've created a diverse and economically differentiated campaign team, which I'm very proud to have. The elections that I've been a part of since 2012, I voted a certain way, which is public. Every single one that I've had the opportunity to vote, I voted. The trajectory of continuous improvement is why we all live in Allen, why we stay in Allen. If you're happy with good enough already, then you have a way to vote. If you are looking for the continued positive and sustained trajectory of Allen, why you moved here and why you continue to stay here and where you want to raise your kids here, then place six, Ben Trahan, Allen City Council. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone for attending today. I've spoken to hundreds of Allen residents who are concerned with three things: rising property taxes, unnecessary and wasteful spending on roundabouts, and the high rate of inflation. Allen voters have a very clear choice today for place number six. If you want a candidate who voted and just admitted tonight again to, for the Wolverine project that would have created thousands of high-density apartments, completely ignoring the requests and the opinions of people, we have a candidate for you. I'm just not that candidate. If you want a candidate that simply approves and rubber stamps every decision that comes to city council, like the $4 million roundabout, we have a candidate for you. I'm just not that candidate. But if you are looking for a candidate who has a 20-year track record of listening to multiple different perspectives and collaborating with global stakeholders, saving millions of dollars without compromising quality and cost, then I am your candidate. I am Srini Ragavan. I'm running for Allen City Council, place number six, and I'm asking for your support and your vote on May 7th. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you again to everybody who did come out tonight and for those of you watching online. I'm not privy to the long-term goals that the city has, and I don't know if we need to be, have those goals set in stone. Times change. Worldwide events happen that can throw those goals out of whack. What I bring to the table is I think outside the box. We don't have to keep doing the same thing, the same way, every year, watch our, watch our taxes continue to rise. Even if we bring down the tax rate, if you're still paying more on your taxes, then your taxes went up. I would, I want to partner with private businesses, small businesses, allow other ways to generate that revenue, other ways to find ways to fund the things that we as Allen Knights love. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I've lived in the city practically my entire adult life. I'm fully vested in the city. In fact, I pay taxes just like all of you. How odds that. My wife and Jeannie and I moved here in 1984 because we believed it was a great place to live and raise a family, and I firmly believe that is still the case today. I'm proud of the city of Allen and what it's become. It's an honor to serve the people of Allen. I appreciate the support. I don't take my job lightly. I, I work extremely hard at it, and I come prepared to every meeting. I've always made it a priority to be fair and respectful to everyone, regardless of who they were. I don't serve a political party on the dais. I don't serve just east side of Allen or west side of Allen. I don't serve a certain ethnicity, race, or gender. I serve everybody in the city of Allen. The people that live here deserve that. My name is Chris Schulmeister. I would appreciate your vote. God bless you all, and thank you for the night.
Please give these candidates a round of applause. Thank you, Sandy, for being our timekeeper. We appreciate it very much.
Nice job, Steve.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, as a reminder, Election Day is Saturday, May the 7th. Early voting starts next Monday, the 25th through May the 3rd. You can go online and see a recording of this. And on behalf of the Rotary Clubs of Allen and the Friends of the Allen Library, thank you for being here and good night.